Go ahead and start. Just show everybody's here there, Mr. Carson. Thank you, please. So let's start off tonight. We had a, for lack of a better word, budget highlights cheat sheet. Tuesday night was handed out to us. Does anybody have any questions on that cheat sheet to start with? It gives you the salary raises, some equipment that's going to be purchased.
Equipment in Charleston.
Yeah. All the people that request funding from us, nobody got below what they got last year. Some of them didn't get what they asked for, but they didn't get below what they asked for. I mean, below what they got last year. And then there's a list of projects. Don't have, expect to see all those done in the next six months.
Oh, easily, easily. We could probably cut it for three months.
Let's get done with what we've got going right now.
Y'all have any questions about the projects? So that's your cheat sheet. When you get into your book, I don't know, I'm not interested in going line by line unless somebody's interested in going line by line. So if we look at the first few pages, that's revenue projections. There's no, nothing jumped out to be there. Fees and licenses, revenues, projections.
They stay the same, do they?
Pretty much.
I'm in like a dog.
Oh, yeah, as far as the rate. Yeah, there's no change in cost whatsoever, ever, on anything. And really, when you're looking at your revenues, the meat and potatoes is right there on page one. When you look at general property taxes and you look at other local taxes, that's where the meat and potatoes are at. In fact, that right there is 15 million of this 21 million plus budget. So right there's three fourths of it on that first page, when it comes to revenues. And the one that you see that has that greatest variance, like on other taxes down there, that's sales and use taxes. Those are taxes that basically come from, not a meal's tax, but come from every purchase that's made in the Highlands. So that one right there, we always try to budget conservatively. And that number, the state projected it like at close to 1.7, but we'll be conservative there and have 1.6. And what you've got to remember, that with something of that nature, what you also have, the bad news, when you hit recession, inflation, those types of things, when the cost of goods goes up, that increases it. You know, you say something that was a dollar nine months ago is now $2. Well, guess what? That very same tax revenue, if it was 5 cents, is now a dime. So, you know, that one right there is the one that can move, but has held up when it comes to something that comes back to us from the state. But that's where the bulk's at, page one.
Question for you. Nothing dealing with this, but talking about tax revenue, just for my benefit. If somebody goes, you know, if you buy something from Amazon and it says taxes, does that come here if I buy?
A portion of it would, yes. Yes. Yep.
There are local sales taxes when you buy something from Amazon, it comes to Kathy.
Okay.
She told me one time, you would not believe the revenue that comes off the QVC channel.
Yep. And that's something that municipal, state governments realized a few years back. And also, that right there, there was a push, you know, a business on Main Street. Well, that's put them at a competitive disadvantage because they're charging tax to a consumer where those internet sales weren't being taxed. But now that's regulated, we see revenues from that.
Just curious.
Yep.
Any questions on revenue? Now, we'll look at expenditure. And there's not a lot of changes in expenditures. The economy's driving, having to give salary increases. So you'll see lines that have increases because of salary increases, departments got increases. You know, I don't know if Quinn Beebe might tell you about it, but I'm thinking manager's report, is that when you told us about the wastewater and the cost at the wastewater plant? So we've got almost half a million dollars just in electricity and chemicals for the water plants.
Yes.
And that's a lot.
Yes.
That's a lot. It used to be that much. We're seeing a lot of increases like that.
Electricity across the board, and just like in the Department of Parks and Recreation, the electricity with athletic field lights. And our wastewater, electricity on our pump stations. I mean, they're just, again, it's across the board with electricity. And then, of course, our fuel, diesel, and our landfill up there, you know, we've got big toys up there and they drink, drink a lot of diesel. So it's another expense.
At several dollars a gallon.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But like you said, it'll stay more or less the same this year, but look out next year, we're going to have to.
Well, yes, there'll be some decisions to be made. And we've got some right now as we're moving forward. Beebe and I spent a good portion of our day today discussing our landfill and visiting our landfill and making decisions that are in the best interest of the city and our fiscal means with the overfill that happened 18 years ago that needs to be addressed. And so we've got a good plan with that, addressing that in-house. You know, it's going to take up a little bit of space on what we have, but from a fiscal standpoint and being smart with our monies, that is by far the best thing to do. We've got a couple of solid years, two and a half, maybe three, who knows? But we are moving in a good direction with discussion of the future of refuge disposal for the city. And as we get things more concrete, that we feel comfortable with bringing it to your attention for decisions to be made, that's the process that we'll take. The wastewater, the EQ Basin project scheduled, we're comfortable that will be done by December 31st. We're very hopeful of October. Again, that's a holding tank. But the other 6 million that we got in grant, that will help looking at things leading into the holding tank. Because we have to address those. That's critical. Because we know we still got storm drains and sewers, and that's in every locality. I mean, that's the way communities were built 18 years ago. Very comfortable with staff and our plants. Of course, as we well know, we've had retirement of Tim out at the water treatment plant. Emmett has come on board. We've got the one retiree that has come back to do some part-time things with us out there. So we're addressing some things that got passed off over the years that are critical to get done now. And we're, the communication in getting things done is really good, really good. Our Booty Albert project, which as you noticed, the seats are done. We're doing some cosmetic things down there now with just some painting and signs and color schemes. We'll be ready for kickoff this fall. The, we've got some engineering costs available to us with the renovation of the stadium as it is today for what we'll call the visiting team locker room, additional restrooms, the officials' room, and cost estimate for the construction of a brand-new locker room facility for the home team. There has been open conversation with the foundation, and they're looking forward to our application and working together to see where we can go. Our plan right now is bids go out and bid acceptance late fall. And if monies are in the proper way, construction would begin the Saturday after the last football game. So that's kind of the game plan. But all those, all those things are coming together, and we just need to see what the numbers are going to be, but we have a feel for it, so.
So as we move through, each page has got, for example, on page nine, the commissioner of revenue is at the top of the page. It's kind of highlighted in gray-green. Is that what you call that?
Money green.
Money green. That money green, I'd say, would look like a warranty bill. And then at the bottom, that account description is commissioner of revenue with the account number. And then if you go to the bottom of that section, and again, the same money green, it says commissioner of revenue and the totals are across the bottom. And then it just continues to go through. And as I looked through, I saw nothing drastic changed in any. I think it's pretty much a cut and dry budget with a lot of what went on last year, just expenses that we, like I said a little bit ago, just expenses that we've run across.
And some expenses we had last year that we don't have this year. We applied it to items that we knew we needed this year or didn't have in the budget last year. So, you know, other than debt service, as far as recurring, we tried to take very same monies and utilize them to the priority this year. As the mayor mentioned, if you guys want to go to page 42, show you how fast money can disappear as opposed to last year. Page 42 is that water filtration. If, anybody at 42 yet?
No.
All right. All right. Yep, tab will be water filtration. So if you go basically 60% of the way down the page, they're at item 40, 51, 01, that's your utility. As you notice, that budget, 125, 122, if you go back to 21, 22. And we're on a pace right now to hit $200,000 this year. So that's why we budgeted 200,000, which is a $78,000 increase. But if you take that 200,000 right there and look at it, and you go to page 43, and you look at just a little over halfway down in that proposed budget, FY '24, there's another $160,000 for treatment supplies. And that right there is up from two years ago, 100,000. This year, 120. And that 160 hopefully is a good number next year to cover it because you've got to remember, these supplies go through great processes to be created. And then if you look right down at the bottom, right above the money green line, there's another 100,000 that we actually could do more improvements, but that's maintenance and those types of things. So in those three line items right there is $460,000. And again, this is an enterprise account, so it takes care of itself with, on the revenue and the expense side of things. So if you do the math at $25 a month, times about 2,400 residential and 300 commercial, if the commercial's at a base, you can see that it's very tight. I mean, there's no fluff in there for this based on the revenues that we bring in. And like Alan said, those right there are fees for services. That's why enterprise, you may hear somebody call it an enterprise fund, a business-type fund, because a business is, when you go into a business, you pay for an item or service. Same thing with water and wastewater and solid waste. So that was the one. I wanted to take you to the page, but you can see right there just how that thing has changed. And if we keep going at the current rate, two years from now, we'll be looking at 250,000 a year for electricity, just to make water.
And when he said $25 a little bit ago, you get a utility bill. The water part is the smallest part of that bill. It's 25 or 28, 25?
25.
And then the?
Refugees is 28, or 29?
Refuge.
26, 29, and 32 or 33? It's 88. Solid waste is 28, I believe it is. Maybe 29. I'd have to look at my chart on this. Yeah. Yeah. I'd have to look at my chart on the.
People say, well, I gotta go pay my water bill. Why my water bill's high? It's $25. But you gotta pay that other stuff.
Yeah, so it's a balancing act of it.
So when we skip to there, we were back in apartments. Let's go to public work, pull that tab up.
All right.
Is that page 24?
Yes, sir.
Yep, page 24.
So, a little bit halfway down, 43, 004, repairs and maintenance. That's street painting, mowing trees. It's kind of held its own. We probably spent more than we had appropriated last year, I guess.
Yeah, we had moved somewhere else because things had to be done.
I know this is not the place it should be, but we had talked about buying a line painting machine to kind of help us with striping parking lots, putting down stop bars. Typical things that we would do outside of the yellow line that runs mile down the road. Have we talked anymore about that?
Yes. I don't.
Project?
We're, yes. So 3,004 repairs and maintenance, that's monies that we spend to have someone do work for us. Also, as you go down, you'll see 6,007 repairs and maintenance. That's what I always call our nuts and bolts line item. That's the line item that when we need a filter or whatever, that's where that comes from. But this here is a line item that we pay folks to help us do jobs that we can't do. So street painting, for whatever reason, we haven't done street painting in the last couple of years. We're losing lines, particularly as we discussed last media out in Dry Run. So we will go out for bid on that within the next couple of months so we can get that on someone's schedule to get our streets painted. We in-house do crosswalks and the parking spots and things of that nature. We've discussed a painting, paint machine for the last several years, and for whatever reason, it kept getting kicked to the curb. And then we managed to make it work because the machine that we would use to do that is basically the same type of machine that we use to paint athletic fields with. The difference is the type of paint. So in respect to asphalt, that paint is a fuel base. We can't put that on grass. So we've walked through that thin ice and we've been okay. So we're making it work, but we need a dedicated machine just to. And if you all, you know, based on what you see, based on what you hear, what's cost one? 15, 20,000? 15,000, about. 15,000. If you want me to go back and look at revenues, see if we can make that work, we'll do so.
You know, and it's not been too many years ago, there were spray cans trying to.
Yes.
And that's the wrong way to do it.
That's the wrong way, correct. Yeah. Okay. Either through a series of additions, subtractions, we'll come up with to, and what I mean by, I may say, okay, I'm comfortable with saying, out of a sales tax revenue or something of that nature, I'm okay with, you know, saying 9,000 here. And I may say, here's another 3,000, but there'll be a 3,000 reduction, so net change would be 12,000. And it may be a net change of 15,000. But if you're okay with coming up with the funding and, you know, feel that's very valuable, then we make sure it's in this budget. We can do that.
I'd just like to know where the money comes from, where we're making the cuts, and I want to know that.
Okay. Sure. Thanks for bringing that up. I mean, I'll be honest with you, that just slipped right through everything we got on our list, and that is certainly a need. And as you saw in our highlights, we are in desperate need of some pickup trucks. And the trucks that we have laid out, they are covered in the general fund and operating budget. So we'll be able to so-called pay cash for the pickup trucks. It's the other equipment, the bucket truck. Here's the list. Refuge truck, camera van, dump truck, and utility truck that we laid out there for open discussion about financing those pieces of equipment. Because Councilman Carson, on, if we go back to, say, that page one of revenues, page one of revenues, if you go to line item 312010, if you look, and if you look at the half-year number, that runs a couple of months behind at state level to where we, you know, they can't give us sales tax revenue the very same month it happens. So reporting has to take place and all that. But if you look at our actual number for 21, 22, that was 1,657,290. I'm building our current budget on 1,600,000 right there. Because you can't build a revenue, especially during these times, because we may bring in 1.7 million there as opposed to 1.6.
But that's what it was.
But because of potential recession, because of known inflation, fees in other areas, when times are hard on taxpayers and public, you know, some of those things may not come in. So that right there, you're still going to have food sales. Automobiles aren't going to be as to what they were. Some, you know, you still need a couch, you still need a chair, you need a television at times when your TV goes bad. So with those things, I'm always conservative in that line, so if something else suffers in the budget, I always hope that that right there can offset the difference. So when you want to know where, the first place I'm going to go, I'm going to go to that line item right there to take care of it. No department's going to, you know, lose their critical day-to-day. And that number right there is based on a projection that I have in writing from the state, a projection. So I know that if state projections, you know, hold up, everything holds up, that's a good number I can add 15,000 to. And that right there is not a tax, but that's based on sales, not restaurant taxes, not meals taxes, but going to the store or going to the auto dealership, going somewhere and making those purchases. So that's sort of the shoulders that's carrying that weight.
Okay.
All right. That's where we'll go. You guys good on that? You'll see 15. We'll price it, whether it's 15 or 17,000, that's what'll go there. We'll make the change there.
So since I went on and opened up that can of worms, did y'all just want to go back to that cheat sheet? Look at the other equipment that you talked about, Alan, we was talking about public work. I think all that equipment that you want to talk about, that's public work stuff in it?
Yes, sir. So the bucket truck, it's in, it's in bad shape. The camera van, we know what happened to it with the lightning strike. You know, we did get some insurance payment on it last week, I believe it was. Yeah, almost 100,000. Almost 100,000 on that, yeah. We have looked at a camera van that is really unique where in the past, we basically built our camera van. We bought the van and then we worked with a company to do all the camera work. We've ran across a company recently, they came in and did a show of a vehicle. Everything is inclusive. It's just, it's all put together, it's ready to go to work once it drives up to us. The guys were really impressed, it was very user-friendly, so we were very happy with that. The, a dump truck, well, you all still see old Orange riding around, and he's pretty tired. So we're in the needs of that and our basic utility truck to get around and handle stuff, so. And that white van, that van you see is the camera van, you know, you look at the thing and say, okay, there goes the city guys riding down the road. That thing, you know, probably cost 45, 50,000, that nice big white van. Well, by the time you threw with the computers and everything that's required in it and the little truck that'll drive through the wastewater line with the camera on it, price tag on that camera van's 191,902. That's the cost of doing business that's required. And the new camera equipment will allow us to do some things in our cammering of our sewer system that the last equipment did not. This new system will allow us to say, as we're going through the sewer, to back up and camera the lateral. And that's where we run into some sticky situations with sewer issues in the lateral. Now we'll be able to back up and point down and see it. It's just one camera. The neat thing is, one camera, but we use different sized wheels to get through the different sized lines that we have. For the previous van, we had to get several different sized cameras. So all this is just a change of wheels. And with our project, the 6 million that we got to begin doing some sewer stuff with, we're going to need this piece to help us out with that.
You've got refuge truck in that list, too?
Yes, sir.
Got one in bad shape, maybe?
We've probably got a couple in bad shape. So what we try to do is we, we have two good ones that we operate each and every day, and then when one of those goes down, we do have a backup. Because again, we need to do refuse every day. So we keep one backup, and we just got through upgrading one to a high dollar just not too long ago. But we've, you know, it's wise, people have beat me up through the years, going, why you got an extra? Well, this is the case why you really need an extra, because you've got to pick up refuge, and one truck just doesn't, won't get. And actually, our refuse trucks, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't what you would say exactly as most other refuge trucks you will see in locations, because we have significant time spent in small alleys with our trucks. So the truck we purchase is sized down. So, you know, it's like, if you go to purchase a vehicle, you need certain accessories or want certain accessories. Well, when we go to the market, the accessory we need is it needs to be smaller to fit in the alleys. And, you know, hey, when we talk about these things, we want you to know what the number is. That way, there are no surprises. Price tag on that is a little bit more than the camera van. Basically, through contract pricing, 274,900. Basically, through contract pricing, $274,950. And with these things, and we, I don't mind speaking highly, we have a wonderful garage. We've got one that's been with us 43 years, and we've got a couple of young fellers that are pretty sharp, and they're a big help with these. And we sat down with those folks and our departments and went through what the needs really are. And these are some of the things that we've passed on the last few years that we, again, we talk about dog being man's best friend, but a lot of times, his best friend is what he gets to work with each and every day. And by the way, in public works, 795,000 there for paving. If you remember back to four or five years ago, three, yeah, three of you were here and you were just coming on when those paving budgets with 150,000 a year was monumental. Was monumental because there'd never been money directly dedicated to paving. So, this year.
In the 22, 23 year, we've got 500,000. And in 23, 24, which is next year, we've got 700,000.
No, we actually, by the time you, you had over 800,000, almost 900,000 this year.
Is that both years combined?
No, that was the current year we're wearing.
22, 23.
Right. And now, in the 23, 24, there's 795,000 there. See, we had money in the 22, 23, but we did not. Right, so we rolled it, we basically rolled it over. And that's why your number grew.
I know.
Yeah, there was no, there was no actual payments made.
That's another discussion.